We'll get started in just a couple of moments.
Dr. Davis?
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to pause for one moment and make sure that we are live streaming. We are? Okay, fantastic. Thank you, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Education for the March 24 business meeting. We're very happy to have you here with us this evening. The first item on the agenda is the roll call.
Ms. Manser?
Here.
Mr. Abarca?
Present.
Ms. Cortez?
Here.
Mr. Hogan?
Here.
Dr. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Westerstrom?
Here.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Here.
Thank you. The next item is the approval of the agenda for this evening. It would be in order to receive a motion to approve. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing none. This will be a roll call vote. The secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Abarca?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Westerstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Thank you. The agenda is approved. The first, the next item is public comment. The public comment is available at each business meeting of the month to allow for up to 10 individuals to speak. We have eight individuals who have indicated they wish to address the board this evening. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. The first name on the agenda is Mr. Frederick Steiner, and I want to confirm if Mr. Steiner has joined us this evening. It appears that Mr. Steiner is not present this evening, so we will go to the next person on the list, and that will be Ms. Coquithia Hill. Please come up and come to the podium for us. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Coquithia Hill. I'm a proud graduate of KCPS, Lincoln College Preparatory Academy, class of '97. I am the CEO and founder of Black KC, which stands for Black Leaders Advancing Quality Urban Education. And we have two kids tonight that are presenting from you all that are featured on our social media platform, the Ramsey Kids. So I'm excited to see them. Like you, I also have proudly served this district as a board member. Over the past 11 years, I've proudly supported each school board. I'll bet, different in configuration and different people in the seats, but each board has had the ability to move the accountability and the governance neither farther than the previous board before it. This speaks to the importance of codifying best practices and providing a framework that allows the superintendent to lead unencumbered. This board, right here, is on record for highlighting policy governance as being vital to the integrity, the stability, and the accountability of this board and the superintendent. Today, I am hopeful that policy governance will prevail. If it's truly going to be the cornerstone of governance, we must hold the board accountable for adhering to its own policies. Today, I am asking you to censure Manny Abarca for his public violations of board policy. The board policies in which he has violated, which is available on your website, is Board Policy 2.5 Code of Conduct, and we're looking at sub 3, 7, 10, 11. Again, that's the KCPS Board Policy 2.5, number 3, 7, 10, and 11, which starts on page 13. I want to spend time reading that. I'm sure you hold that very close to your heart. But I will tell you that over the past few months, and escalating with the infamous social media posts in which Manny racialized comments, also including a picture of myself, of my company's logo, and others, and then also adding a URL to the Kaufman Foundation and School Smart KC, for which I'm formerly an employee of, Mr. Abarca has created and instigated false, harmful, dangerous narratives that says that Kaufman Foundation and School Smart KC are trying to buy board seats by co-opting black leaders into getting black professionals to run for office in KCPS. That's harmful and dangerous considering we have two professional black women who are running. That weaponization of race is harmful to them and their chances to support the district that they love so much, and it gives an unfair advantage to Patty Manser, who is running a contested election, unlike Manny, who no one is running against him. He also has said things, and you all, as indicative of your consent agenda,
Ms. Hill, I'm sorry.
Has accepted money from Kaufman Foundation, School Smart, and the Schools in Justice Program that provides attorneys to families facing eviction. Those families need that representation in court, and you have served 233 families that have faced eviction, have been served from School Smart's money.
Ms. Hill, I'm sorry. I have to apologize.
So I thank Patty Manser for your leadership. I'm asking you to use your policy and censure Manny Abarca for his violations of your policy governance. Thank you so much for your time and attention. Have a great day.
Thank you. The next person on the, for public comment is Ms. Gwen Grant. Welcome, Ms. Grant.
Good evening. Thank you. I have some prepared texts for today, but I want to divert from it for just a minute because I want to speak to the issue of the concerns that I have about the behavior of Manny Abarca. But to place it in the context of a bigger concern about how this campaign has been racialized and the propagation of false narratives, which is akin to what we've recently experienced under President Donald Trump. Your behavior by, from the moment that Tanisha Ford filed her intent to run for KCPS, members of this board, particularly Manny Abarca, Nate Hogan, and others, have propagated false narratives about the intentions of these highly qualified black women who are pursuing public office to propagate false narratives about black leaders advancing quality urban education. And you have gone unchecked. So many, you find yourself in this very precarious place tonight because had we as leaders, had Patty Manser, the president of the board, checked your behaviors in the nascent stage, perhaps it would not have gotten out of hand. Had Mitch McConnell and Republicans on the Hill checked Donald Trump before he continued to spew falsehoods about a rigged election, perhaps we would not have had an insurrection. The time for this behavior must, is now. It must end, and you must be checked on it. And if you believe that black lives matter, that truth and justice should prevail, then it is incumbent upon you, Patty Manser, the president of the board, and everyone on this board, to hold board members accountable. But from the moment that black woman cast her lot to run, phone calls from your minions calling her job, why should she run now? This is Patty's seat. And then the narratives get louder. There's this dark money for a black organization that is led by a black woman, that is fighting for black children and black parents, must somehow have nefarious intent or must be some, there must be some malicious behavior undergirding it. When this district has benefited from funding from the Kaufman Foundation, School Smart KC, with this narrative that there has to be a black cabal that's going to infiltrate and dismantle a school district from which we are graduated.
Ms. Grant, I'm sorry that three minutes have concluded. Thank you so much.
You're more than welcome.
The next individual who has signed up to speak is Dr. Linwood Tahid. Is Mr. Tahid here this evening? I do not see him. The next person on the agenda for public comment is Ms. Gillian Rainingbird. Welcome.
Hello and good evening. My name is Gillian Rainingbird. I'm a KCPS parent, present and in the past. It's good to see you all this evening, and I'm glad I have this forum to actually say what I need to say as a parent and a community member and advocate for students, particularly our special needs students. Those of you who know me know that that's what is near and dear to my heart, is our special needs students. But I've been bothered by a recent event, and it has deeply disturbed me. A current sitting school board member, Mr. Manny Abarca, has called out organizations that have been great allies to KCPS. Kaufman Foundation for One has recently donated $285,000 to KCPS for real-world learning. Now, we know that real-world learning is needed to ensure that all scholars have market value, particularly our most marginalized and vulnerable students. School Smart KC, Latinx Collaborative, and the Parent Power Lab all engage and support parents very well. He also named those organizations. I would hate to have those great or potential relationships severed because Mr. Abarca's personal agenda. Furthermore, Mr. Abarca doxed a KCPS family with his kids, with kids. It was done intentionally while supporters threatened bodily harm on social media. This is not hearsay. This is a firsthand account that I've witnessed on social media. I'm requesting that Mr. Abarca be held accountable for his actions. KCPS, the students, the families, the community members deserve professional conduct on all levels and leadership. Surely, the board follows this protocol. Please review your board policy immediately. The board screams parent engagement, and yet you continue to remain disengaged from the parents. You censor parents at three minutes. If you want to engage parents, engage them. If a board meeting is not where a parent can attain you all, then where can it be done? And one more other thing. Patty, I admonish you to quit utilizing school resources for reelection. The ad in the school magazine, it was real cute, but yet it's real unethical. Thank you very much. You all have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Rainingbird. The next person on the public comment is Mr. Matthew Oats.
I guess kind of changing topics here for a little bit. Thank you, Board Chair, Dr. Bedell, fellow board members, administration. It's good to see everybody again. I'm here tonight to discuss how this district begins the recovery from the COVID-19 shutdown. Our first step towards that will be our fiscal year 2022 budget. This coming year will kick off one of the more pivotal areas in this school district's history. Historically, this district has not handled large disruptions very well, whether it be the right sizing of 2010 or where we closed half our schools, the end of DSEG in the 90s, the beginning of DSEG back in the 1970s. This district wasn't really able to navigate those challenges in part because previous boards and administrations did not take a proactive stance to deal with what we know to be the known unknowns coming up for this district. So during this budget cycle, my hope is that I get to hear great dialogue about how this hopefully first post-COVID budget begins to tackle those known effects. While a pandemic is a unique occurrence for all of us, what we can look to is past prolonged disruptions in education systems across the country for the consequences, and then rely on our internal district expertise to combat them. An area of great concern for me personally is our high school students. While all levels will see impact, we have the shortest time remaining with our high school kids. Past prolonged disruptions in education has resulted in great, greatly increased dropout rates in high school populations, both in the immediate aftermath of that disruption but also in those subsequent years that students who have fallen behind early in their high school years and provided with no means to catch up would also end up dropping out. I would like to hear from the administration board how we are planning to push resources to prevent and recover potential dropouts in the immediate future and also strategies that track subsequent cohorts' progress to four-year graduation. This would better inform current and future boards and administrations about how we allocate resources in future years for course recovery strategies, whether that's extra spending for summer school, evening or weekend classes, or whatever the district ultimately decides is the best way to get to that, get our students back on pace. This would also keep the community involved and let us know what's best, what's best needed. I understand that graduating in four years is not something that we have to do for every student, but in the spirit of, again, being proactive, we can make a fair assumption that the state will extend very little grace to this district should we fall short in our four-year graduation metric on our path to accreditation. I would also like to hear what investments we are going to be making for social emotional support for students, families, and staff to ensure that they could be at their best in the classroom. If we are proactive there, I think we can assure KCPS are ready for that world. Thanks again for everybody's commendable work, for the work that's been done thus far. I know that pandemic recovery is not something most of us signed up for when, when we took these positions. But with great study, with great joint study as a board, proactive dialogue, and intentionality during this budget cycle, I believe the district can be the shining example of how to navigate this disruptive period. Great to see everybody. I know these are tough times for a variety of reasons.
Thank you, Mr. Oats.
But a great man once told me that we are built for this, and now it's time for everyone, starting with this fiscal year 22 budget. Best of luck.
Thank you, very much.
For sure.
Appreciate that. The next person on the agenda for public comment is Mr. Edgar Palacios.
Thank you, Mr. Oats, for elevating the idea that we are built for this. Good evening, Dr. Bedell, Madam Chair, board members. My name is Edgar Palacios, and like many of you, I wear multiple hats in our community. And I also actually live in Mr. Hogan's sub-district. I come before you today in my capacity as Executive Director of Revolución Educativa, RevEd, a 501(c)(4) organization, organization dedicated to building sustained collective power in the Latinx community. Like the KCPS School District and many other education and community organizations across Kansas City, RevEd has seed funding from SSKC Action Fund. SSKC Action Fund is a 501(c)(4) organization working in parallel with the research, collaboration, and policy development functions of School Smart Kansas City. This seed funding allows us to begin the work of harnessing the collective power of Latinx families to improve academic achievement for students in all schools in Kansas City. This is what we're doing with our funding, and I think it is important that the board ask itself if the roughly $7 million it's received from School Smart Kansas City has been used effectively to improve outcomes for its students. RevEd had no interest in engaging in this school board election cycle other than hosting a community forum for candidates and a small get-out-the-vote campaign. We would have liked to remain focused on the 51,198 Latinx students in the greater Kansas City metro area. Unfortunately, Mr. Abarca's actions throughout this campaign season have made that impossible. I have known Manny for 10 years since our days serving together on the Young Latino Professionals Board. I recognize his humanity and his dedication. And at the core of who I am, I believe in what the power of Latinx representation means for our students. And so on multiple levels, it brings me no joy to stand here before you today and publicly condemn his recent actions. On behalf of RevEd and our partners at Black Kansas City, I ask you to follow Ms. Cortez's lead and publicly denounce the actions and the words of Mr. Abarca, who uses his elected position to share the phone number and home address of a parent and constituent in the district. We ask the entire KCPS Board of Education to formally censure Mr. Abarca, as permitted in the KCPS Board Manual. We acknowledge that Mr. Abarca apologized on Tuesday evening. However, in addition to this violation of personal boundaries, Mr. Abarca used racially charged and aggressive language that, by his admission, caused further division between communities and fueled repressed trauma. It is unacceptable that Mr. Abarca used social media to denounce the very constituents he refuses to speak to directly. There are real issues to be solved in Kansas City public schools, buildings to reopen, and opportunity gaps to close. We need our elected officials to place the needs of KCPS students and families at the forefront of every conversation and conduct themselves with integrity. Thank you for your public service and your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Palacios. The next person on the agenda for public comment is Mr. Spark Buchhart. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, the Board, and Superintendent Bedell. My name is Spark Buchhart. I am the convener of the Parent Power Lab. Many of you know me. Many of you have had an opportunity to converse with me or converse with the Parent Power Lab. And this board leadership has touted the virtue of stability on this board. And I will not disagree with the virtue of stability that the board has expressed. But I will say that stability is not exclusive to this board. And to say anything other than that is a falsehood. I've fallen in love with education and public education in Kansas City because we have a fascinating history. As a community historian, my whole job and intent is to translate that fascinating, that fascinating history that public education has in Kansas City to regular, average, ordinary, everyday parents, which I consider myself one. Many have seen the history presentation that I've done talking about public education in Kansas City. And public education in Kansas City and public education in general is a passion of mine. I've been to Jefferson City fighting for the survival of this district. I have worked on behalf of the students and parents in this district. And all I have gotten in return from this passion of mine is slaps in the face. One thing that I can say is that I go forward despite these slaps in the face because it is bigger than any one of you up here. It's bigger than me. The problem is, we keep on moving forward thinking that transition in this district is a bad thing. We think that democracy expressed in this district is a bad thing. And just because you have an opponent does not mean that there's somehow stability at stake. This election has been one of the most
Mr. Buch.
thoughtful, thoughtful elections that I have seen in this, in this modern era.
I'm sorry.
Can I have a couple more minutes, please?
Your, your three minutes is up.
Can I have a couple more minutes, please?
Can you just conclude your sentence for us, please?
Can I have a couple more minutes, please?
Well, I want to be fair to all the other speakers, sir.
Well, we have speakers that did not, did we have speakers that did not show up?
If, if you could go ahead and just complete your statement that you, that you are in the middle of.
I will say this. The reason why parents are leaving this district and families are leaving this district is because of displays that are doing, that are being displayed here right now. And what Manny Abarca did to my family this week is unconscionable.
Mr. Buchhart, thank you. Mr. Buchhart, I appreciate it. Thank you. We appreciate you coming this evening. I don't believe, is there an additional, did Mr. Steiner appear? All right. Thank you very, oh, is that Mr. Steiner?
It is.
Oh, he is here.
I know that, I like the speech at home.
Okay.
But you all know what I'm going to say. I've been saying it for seven months here, and that is, please open schools now. You've seen what happens to the attendance figures. You've seen what happens to the academic performance figures. They're all down. If you guys don't open it up, there will not be a Kansas City Public Schools. It will all go to charter and private. And you are all aware of the inequality that that creates. Now, you've looked at the medical figures, some of you. You've seen the lack of transmission for COVID between students at schools. I shared with all of you the document that showed the study that transmission rates in schools are actually lower than the community at large. That means it's safer for kids to be in schools. Now, you've said that the objections so far are that you're afraid to open schools and have no teachers, no staff show up because they're afraid, which is funny because that's a communications problem, which, given the prevalence of communication majors on the board and at KCPS, seems troubling. I mean, it's elementary that you address this by expressly directing the facts of the case, looking at, okay, tell teachers what are the risks? It's straightforward. Stell staff, what are the risks? And you can do that. The math is there. And the CDC recently released a revision of their guidance suggesting, saying that the distance requirement between students to avoid increased risk of transmission is three feet rather than six. Six feet was the reason why schools were closed. That's why we have halftime schools right now. Well, that's been changed, so let's get kids back to school. Let's improve their performance. Private school registrations are up 300% in Kansas City. The lines are huge. Charter schools are opening up all over the city. Currently, throughout the United States, 51% of students are still, are back to school full-time. Let's make Kansas City one of those for our kids. I mean, I've showed before to members of this board the detrimental effects of having kids out of school. School buildings provide a safe space for children. The increase in student, in kid, child death between this year and two years ago is 31%. I shared with those figures earlier. And that's just one impact. You can look at other impacts of having schools closed in things like domestic violence. And The Atlantic did another article that showed not only is it actually health and safety, but the long-term effects of being out of school are detrimental throughout the life of the child as far as educational attainment and future earnings. So come on, there's like no reason to wait. Go immediately. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Steiner. That concludes the public comment section for this evening. The next item on the agenda is the report of the District Advisory Council. Is, do we have Mr. Demonte Rochester or Ms. Susan Stocking present for a presentation this evening? I do not see Mr. Rochester nor Ms. Stocking. All right. Then the next item on the agenda will be the presentation of this evening's revenue and expenditure report. The chair recognizes Board Treasurer Manny Abarca.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to wait for our report to come up here. In the meantime, acknowledging Mr. Oats and his great wisdom that he expressed and his wonderful guidance transitioning me to treasurer, very much appreciate it. and his wonderful guidance transitioning me to treasurer, very much appreciate that guidance.
I think we have a little bit of a pause.
All right. So moving on to our first slide here, for our summary of revenues, expenditures, and fund balance. The important things to note here is we are 67% of the way through our fiscal year. 75% received in revenues and 48% spent in expenditures at this point. If we look at slides three, to start in at three for our local revenues here. We can look at the current delinquent property taxes, roughly $6.3 million below budget at this point. We project that this is roughly going to be eight to nine million dollars at the end of this year. Largely due to the uncollected 2019 revenues still held at the State Tax Commission. These are the same entities, corporations, unfortunately, that are disputing the property taxes that they do, they don't want to pay. If we look at the total local revenues to date, it's 84.2% of the budget. So I believe that's probably on slide four. There we go. Sorry, my apologies. Bottom right there, 84.2% of the budget. Looking at slide five, county and state revenues. I'm at a sink there. County revenue is still virtually at zero as they collect late in the year. As we transition to slide six, our federal revenues. The CARES Act funds line 5424 are not yet fully collected, but we expect them to be by the end of the year. One note here, no revenue in our child nutrition lines as budgeted in 5445, 54, or 5445 through 5446. This is due to the fact that we are operating off of the summer feeding program due to the COVID data. And so line 5041 shows under-budget revenues. Or I'm sorry, unbudgeted revenues. If you look down, the bottom right again, total federal revenue is 74.5% of the budget. Moving on to our, our pie chart here, again, always indicating that local revenues is such a significant portion of our total budget here. Thus, pay those property taxes pretty please. 77 points, 77% is local. Moving on to slide eight, salaries and benefits. Mostly on target for budget, although we do expect some underspend due to the positions that have been unfielded, if possible. Moving on to the next slide here, purchase services. Many lines are underspent, again, due to COVID. Although we will pick up within person as we transition fully back. Purchase services are only at 34.5% of the budget to date. As we look at our supplies on the next slide here, yep. We're 45% of the budget, again, trailing due to learning from home. As I'm sure we expect more additional spend down there as we transition back to in-person. Our net revenues over expenditures. To date, we are at 68 million revenues over expenditures. However, our local revenue is mostly collected for the year. As we look here, again, our expense chart, 65% of our total expenditures are salary and benefits. Transitioning to our investment report shows that we have invested the property tax revenues to align to future payroll dates. Again, as funds come in, they do not always come in equally as we would normally equate to our paychecks. So we invest some of this money so that we can cover our expenses as we transition through the year. Any questions?
Are there any questions from my, from my colleagues on this report? Ms. Cortez?
I'm going to learn how to do this. Maybe you could, the, the revenue around school lunch and the feeding programs, I think that's an area that I've gotten a few questions from folks on. If you could just give us a little bit more clarity about that.
Yeah, very briefly, the reason that there's no revenue on our traditional school lunch and school breakfast and snack lines is because, under the COVID environment, the USDA has allowed us to claim those revenues under the summer feeding program, which is that other line Mr. Abarca referenced. It has a lot more flexibilities in it and allows us to do things that aren't necessarily fully compliant with the lines that those other revenues come in on. It, it looks like right now we'll do that through the end of this fiscal year at least.
Any other additional questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate that. The next item on the agenda are the ad hoc committee reports. So I want to invite the ad hoc committee chairs to provide a brief report. I will first recognize Government Relations Committee Chair Jennifer Wolfsee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to remind the board members that we have coming up on April 12th in the Capital Plaza Hotel in Jefferson City, an opportunity to participate in Missouri School Board Association's Legislative Forum. And just as a reminder of what that entails, we go down in the morning and Cabinet is also invited to attend as well. But we go down in the morning, it probably is going to look a little bit different. This is our first time after COVID. It was canceled last year. And we will do sessions, but I think they're going to be separated so that they are socially distant. Myself, Ms. Quinn Lee, and Dr. Adams from St. Louis, and the Board Chair Dorothy Rhodey Collins will be on a panel talking about some of the things that we are seeing in our school districts. So we'd love to have you guys be there to hear us. But then there'll be some other sessions, some breakout sessions. And then we'll convene there and go over to the Capitol where what we did last year was break into two groups and lobby various members of the Kansas City Caucus, but also people who we know are influential on the ed committees. So we'll probably do that again. We might break into a little further. But I highly encourage everybody that feels comfortable going to take advantage of this. Jefferson City has been a hotbed of legislative activity that we need to show our face about down in, and we'll prepare you before we go down. But I would really encourage you to partake, and I think you need to just let June Kolkmeier know if you want to attend. Even if you can attend half, I think that's good as well. Any questions?
Mr. Hogan?
Sorry, sorry, Ms. Wolfsee. Remind me of the date.
Sure, April 12th. And it's a, it's a fairly early day. I think it begins at eight, if I remember. So we, we go pretty early. It's on a Monday.
Thank you very much. I will now call on Communications and Community Engagement Chair, Dr. Marvia Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I want to first give an update regarding the student District Advisory Council. You know, it has been so great to see the engagement of those folks, those young people actually, you know, speaking on behalf of their peers and advising us. So we decided a couple of months ago to increase their engagement. So now they will be with us on a quarterly basis, presenting their report, appearing. So it will now look like January, April, July, and September. And we, this has already been added to our overall agenda by our Board Secretary. So thank you for that. And then to talk about how we've been really brainstorming with increasing engagement with the community. So before COVID upended all of our lives, we had had these fun plans of having these little coffee and donut outings where a couple of us would show up and community could meet us up at wherever and just talk, you know? And so we've been talking about how to continue those, or continue those discussions and really get that implemented now that things are sort of starting to open up a bit more. Using social distancing and all of the, you know, green door measures, of course. But we, the proposed idea right now that board colleagues can weigh in on with us is to begin doing these things, perhaps starting in mid-April, hosting these community conversations, maybe a couple of us would be present at a time, doing this maybe once a month. The location is to be determined, but it'd just be a rotating basis so we can increase access to the community. When we talk about this, we always wonder, okay, is it the right time? What time of day is best? Is it early morning? Is it in the evening? You know, people, we all pretty much work full-time, so how do we, a lot of people work full-time. So how do we sprinkle that throughout? So if you want to contact us or, you know, contact me to give me some insights on when would be the best time as a community member or a parent, you want to engage your board colleague, your board members. So that concludes our report at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Any questions? All right, then I'm going to turn to the Chair of Finance and Audit, Ms. Rita Cortez.
Did it this time. Couple of, a couple of notes for our community. And although Matt Oats just left a minute ago, he kind of set this up really well. We really want to work as a board and as an administration to demystify the budget process for our community. The first step towards that is on Monday evening, April 5th, we're going to be doing a Budget 101 presentation. It'll go from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. online. And it'll be a virtual presentation, just to give us all common language around how the budget gets built. The other important piece, and we'll share the dates when we do the Budget 101 presentation, is that in May, the board will present, the administration will present to the board the outlines of the final budget and seek public comment. And one of the things that I shared in a conversation or presentation to the District Advisory Committee recently is that public comment on the budget really is critical in helping us not only look at the next budget year, but out into the future. There are many times when a parent or parents have shared comments or community members that we can't act on in the immediate present, but allow us to shape our planning into the future so that in subsequent budget years, we're able to prioritize. The superintendent is able to encourage us to prioritize some of the things that families and students identify as areas that the district can improve in and can expand resources. So I can't emphasize enough how much we seek the community's participation in the budgeting process. And we would really encourage you to take that hour on April 5th to join us so that we can create a common framework for that conversation.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments on that? All right, thank you very much. Now, I think we will turn to the Superintendent's Report. The Chair recognizes Dr. Bedell.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. We're excited tonight. We have a couple of items under the Superintendent's Report. The first will be a quick video highlight of our virtual tours that we've created in-house to help support the marketing and recruitment of families into our schools. That will be followed by our Sancofa oratory contest. And we have four wonderful scholars here with their families that will have an opportunity to present to you. They're winning presentations, so we're excited about that. That will be followed by a revenue projections report. And then we will have a tech- technology report planned for the SY 2122 year. So at this time, let's roll with the video highlight.
We are happy to have you visit our family here at Northeast Middle School. My name is Principal Schrever, and I am the principal here at Northeast Middle School. We serve students in the seventh and eighth grade in the historic northeast neighborhood in Kansas City.
Welcome to Northeast Middle, the home of the mighty Titans.
Welcome to Northeast Middle. Transitioning to middle school is exciting, but it can also be scary. But that's what we're here for. I teach students success skills. A class where students get in touch with their emotions and learn how to stay on task in their courses.
Hello, my name is Mirna Naya. I am the parent liaison at Northeast Middle School. I communicate with parents, legal guardians regarding school information, events, school advisory committee, and more. I love interacting with students' families every day.
Hello and welcome. My name is Christine Disming, and I teach geography and economics here at Northeast Middle School. We have a safe and nurturing environment in our classrooms. Your student will enjoy learning here.
Hi, I'm Laura Culp. I'm an eighth grade math teacher. Welcome to eighth grade. We offer advanced courses in all core subjects.
Learning care is fun and rigorous because we care about our students and their academic experience. Northeast Middle School students are successful and prepared for high school.
AVID, which stands for Advancement via Individual Determination, is a college and career readiness program. Students develop the skills they need to be successful in college, starting in middle school. Most students continue their AVID course throughout high school with the same group of peers.
Hi, I'm Mr. Fleming, and I teach PE and Health at Northeast Middle School. And we have a wide range of electives, including choir, band, orchestra, visual arts, creative writing, and much more.
Hello, my name is Kenneth Moore, and I teach seventh, eighth grade choir. Our goal is to ensure our students get the very best academic opportunities. Our students maintain a well-rounded experience.
Northeast Middle School is truly a diverse environment. We have scholars from all over the world, and we have as many as 30 languages spoken in our building at any given time. To celebrate the diversity in our building, we host an international festival so our scholars can get a true taste of the world.
Hi, I'm Ben Jante. I'm the art teacher at Northeast Middle School. Project Lead the Way, one of our electives, provides our students with hands-on, real-world learning. This will give them experience in growing industries like computer science, design, and robotics.
Hello, I'm Ms. Shepherd, and I'm the athletic director here at Northeast Middle School. Here at Northeast Middle School, we offer a variety of sports for boys and girls, including basketball, track and field, soccer, wrestling, swimming, cross-country, flag football, cheerleading, and volleyball.
Thank you for taking the time to visit with us today here at Northeast Middle School. To learn more about our campus or to request a personal tour, please call 816-418-3400. We look forward to sharing with you more of the exciting things occurring at Northeast Middle School.
All right, so I want to thank our communications team for putting that together as we continue to evolve as a school system and understanding that there are natural disasters, natural health disasters and things that pop up like what happened with the coronavirus. I think as our school district continues to evolve, we need to be flexible. We need to be able to reach people and meet people where they are. And we think that these virtual tours will give everybody a deeper overview of our schools without them having to leave their homes. So for our next presentation, I'll go ahead and pass it over to Dr. Darryl Davis, who leads our work in this area as our Innovations Officer and our Equity Officer Assistant Superintendent. So Darryl Davis, we're ready for you to present to us our scholars.
Good evening, Board Chair Mansour, Superintendent Bedell, board members and audience. I am so proud this evening to present to you the winners of our annual Black History Month Sancofa oratory contest. Our contest, so you see here, we had a committee, the scoring committee is listed there, a committee of four that reviewed the numerous submissions from around the district. We were able to advertise our contest by way of speaking to principals, sending information to them. It was posted on each school's website as well as social media. Also, you see the rubric. Each student turned in a video submission. Each student turned in a video submission of their oratory submission, and we looked at preparation, body language, clarity, and relevance to the theme. So our theme centers around Sankofa, which is a mythical bird with roots tracing back to the Akon people of Ghana in West Africa. The Sankofa bird flies forward while looking backward, and you will see an egg on the bird's body. That represents the future. So it symbolizes protecting our future while acknowledging and embracing our past. And so in the great spirit of African-American tradition, of many great orators, from Frederick Douglass to James Baldwin to Martin Luther King Jr., the past, as well as many orators that we see in the present today and many in our midst, I now present to you our winners. Our first winner for the kindergarten through 3rd grade category is Ms. Zamira Ramsey, and she is performing an original poem, Virtuous Woman.
A virtuous woman is strong, powerful, and can still be beautiful while doing it all. But she knows that she is not alone. The Creator, heaven and earth, will lead her from the darkness and bring her towards life as she reaches that to help someone else.
Our superintendent and board chair are going to come down for a picture. Ray, do we want the family to come up with them? Okay. Ramsey family and any AC Prep? I think we can have four come up for the picture. Congratulations, Ms. Ramsey. Principal Poe? And I'm sorry, I failed to mention that Zamira is a 1st grader at African Center Prep. I do want to call out the school. So again, congratulations to Zamira. For our next winner, Chase Minton is a 6th grader at Border Star Montessori, and she will be performing an original poem entitled Sleepless Nights.
Now I lay me down to sleep. I pray the Lord my soul to keep. A world with peace and unity, a world that's not reality. To free me from this world we call democracy, they made a mockery out of our country. It's a prophecy that something has to be better or right, but none of the little people stand up and fight. I dream of a world for me off my neck. I know life's not perfect, but it's worth it. And as I slowly close my eyes, I pray for peace and justice to rise forever ever, forever ever, to the end of time. Thank you.
If we can have Chase's family come up and join the superintendent and our winner and Board Chair Mansur. the 7th and 8th grade division. Solomon won the middle school division last year as well, so here to defend his title for the second year in a row is Mr. Solomon Noreen. Solomon will be performing "The Other America" by the Reverend Martin Luther King Jr.
I would like to use this as a title for my lecture tonight, "The Other America." And I use this title because there are literally two Americas. Every city in our country has this kind of dualism, this schizophrenia, split at so many parts. And so every city ends up becoming two cities rather than one. There are two Americas. One America is beautiful for a situation. In this America, millions of people have the milk of prosperity and the honey of equality flowing right before them. This America is the habitat of millions of people who have food and material necessities for their bodies, culture and education for their minds, freedom and human dignity for their spirits. In this America, children grow up in the sunlight of opportunity. But there is another America. This other America has a daily ugliness of it that transforms the buoyancy of hope into the fatigue of despair. In this other America, men walk the streets in search for jobs that do not exist. In this other America, millions are forced to live in distressing housing conditions. In this other America, thousands finish high school, reading at a 7th, 8th, and sometimes 9th grade level. Not because they're dumb, not because they don't have the native intelligence, but because the schools are so inadequate, so overcrowded, so devoid of quality, so segregated, if you will, that the best in these minds can never come out. Probably the most critical problem in the other America is the economic problem. There are so many other people in the other America who can never make ends meet because their incomes are far too low if they have incomes, and their jobs are so devoid of quality. And so in this other America, unemployment is a reality. So the vast majority of Negroes find themselves perishing on a lonely island of poverty in the midst of a vast ocean of material prosperity. We can never solve the problem of racism until there's a recognition of the fact that racism still stands at the center of so much of our nation. And until it is removed, there will be people walking the streets of life, living in their humble dwellings, feeling that they are known, feeling that they have no dignity, and feeling that they are not respected. The first thing that must be on the agenda of our nation is to get rid of racism. Thank you.
Would all the AC Prep staff members come join Solomon? Congratulations, Solomon. We are looking... Solomon also, by the way, is the citywide debate champion for this year. Our next winner, fourth and final winner, representing East High School, is McKenna Abaway. She's a senior. She will be performing "Mother to Son" by Langston Hughes. I learned this evening that McKenna was a student at Whittier when Principal Hina Hosa was a principal there, so they sat together again. He handed her her 6th grade at the recognition ceremony, and will soon hand her a diploma here in another month and a half. So thank you, Principal Hina Hosa.
Well, son, I tell you, life for me ain't been no crystal stairs. It had tacks in it and splendors and boards torn up and places with no carpet on the floor, bare. But all the time, I's been climbing on reaching, landing, and turning corners, and sometime going in the dark where there ain't been no light. So, boy, don't you turn back. Don't you sit on the steps because you find it kind of hard. Don't you fall now for I still going, honey. I still climbing. And life for me ain't been no crystal stairs. Thank you.
Thank you, McKenna. We could have mom and staff come up and join us? Oh, okay. Oh, okay, to these staff members. Please give all of our winners a round of applause.
Thank you to everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight and sharing your talents with us. It was very moving and beautiful, and thank you to the educational leaders who help guide these students.
Outstanding. So thank you all, and yeah, I'm moved by the talent that we have in this school district. Our next item on the superintendent's report will be the revenue projections report, and for that, we will have our Chief Finance Operations Officer, Linda Quinley, to present that to the board and the community.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Baddell, board members, and public. We are, believe it or not, officially into budget season. And so at our last finance committee meeting, we started talking about revenues because that's where it all begins, in the world of public education. Little different than the private sector, how you do this, but we need to know what we have before we start spending and planning for what we might spend. So quickly, as we look at this current year, what you see here is that we are... Our primary concerns around revenue, Mr. Barker mentioned it during our treasurer's report, we are trailing roughly $10 million behind budget in current and delinquent property taxes. Should what is being held at the State Tax Commission be released, we would hit that, but unfortunately, from a timing of hearing perspective, we don't expect that to happen. The basic foundation formula, or in our environment, the line of revenue whereby local revenue is passed to charter schools, is trailing about $10 million more than budgeted, but that's a bad thing for us because it's a negative budget line. That may change because recently, with the state general revenue condition, you've probably heard of many announcements about release of additional revenues into public education. We don't yet have that amount. We don't know what it's going to be, but currently, our formula is funding at 94% of what it is supposed to. We are hoping that transitions to 98 or 100, there's very good likelihood, and if that's the case, we will more than recover that difference. So we should know that in the next 30 days, would be my guess. So currently, we're coming in, when you add up all the lines, at roughly $10.6 million below budgeted revenue for this year. So as we look at revenue for next year... Seems... Can somebody page for me? Doesn't want me to. There we go. Whoops, now I've got all kinds of lines. Okay. So as we look at next year, I really just want to take you quickly through the primary lines of revenue and what is most important at this point, and this is what we had some great conversation with, thank you to our finance committee members, about what are our assumptions that we're going to use as we formulate the revenue lines for next year. So assessed valuation and local property taxes are, of course, the largest line of revenue for the school district. Currently, based on information received from the assessor's office, our preliminary assessed valuation is a 3.25% increase from the final last year, about 1.7% increase from preliminary a year ago. So it's just under $3.9 million of assessed valuation. So we're going to use that number. It will change and morph a little bit as that process continues, but it's the most reliable data that we have today. The collection rate, we had a really good conversation about this at finance committee. It's interesting to have so much excitement around this kind of conversation. But collection rate is another primary factor in this because, you know, not everyone pays on time, and then there is a fee that goes to the county. We are using an 87% assumed collection rate. You can see in that line below that 87 that it's a little low compared to our historical trend of 1819, which was a more typical year. 1920, we hit a real low mark for us, but that was the reassessment year. We're hitting about 87% this year, and so we're going to hold that tight for next year and assume that to be the case. And that is inclusive of a $2.9 million fee that goes to the county to pay for the assessment and collection work they do on our behalf. And then, of course, our levy will be $4.9599 under Article 10 of the Missouri Constitution. So collectively, this produces an increase of about $7.6 million over what we are projecting for this year. It does not include those monies held at the State Tax Commission, which is about $11.8 million. Those hearings are largely set to be June of this year, which pushes that revenue into next year after July 1st. We're assuming that we're going to collect 70% of what is being held at the State Tax Commission, and that's based largely on the fact that the property owners have asked for a 35% reduction, and we don't expect that they'll go that full 35, but we want to be a little conservative. My guess is we'll probably collect as much as 80% of it, but we're going to be a little conservative at this point in time until we get a better picture there. So other lines that are important and large line, Proposition C revenue, that is the Missouri 1-cent sales tax for education. DESI gives us an amount per WADA, or weighted average daily attendance, that's certainly currently set to increase by $22 per WADA. You will see on that third bullet, we're going to have a decrease of roughly $1 million here. So even though that amount per WADA is going up by 22 cents because of how WADA works in the Missouri calculation and the fact that we have had declining WADA, we will lose $1 million on this line next year. In the state formula, or the transfer to local revenue, at this point, we're projecting that the charter WADA holds, goes up just a little bit for next year, and that our WADA goes up just a little bit next year. And that is important because we use the higher of the prior year, and that's just part of the Missouri process. So if we have 15,000 kids this year, and 14,000 next year, and 13,000 the year after that, you can go back to the 15. Charters do not have that ability, with the exception of this year under some COVID rules. We're assuming 100% funding of the formula, that is what's been indicated in the state budget. Because general revenues are strong, they had the early withhold this year, but right now, they're telling us to expect 100%. And so that's going to reduce... That results in a reduction of the amount shared with charters of $4 million because they're going to get more from us to offset the local through that calculation. The other line that is important to us this year is E-Rate. E-Rate funds certain eligible technology-related expenditures. It's on a reimbursement basis the year after, and so what you spend this year becomes eligible for some form of reimbursement next year. Because we aren't spending a lot of E-Rate eligible this year, we're expecting a $1 million decrease next year. Merchants and manufacturers tax is generally placed in the capital projects fund. This is historical. Those of you who have been on the board for a while may remember that this was the line that the board, the administration identified, and the board authorized to pay the principal and interest payment on those four debt instruments that are on our books since we do not have a GO bond. This year, we placed it in the incidental fund to bring up this operating budget because if you remember, we originally brought you a request to deficit spend roughly $6 million in the operating budget. You asked us to move some of that M&amp;M money over this year, so we protected the operating budget a little bit. We need to put it back into capital next year because we've got to pay that $8 million of annual principal and interest. We were able to put it in that other fund this year because of the fact we had good balances in capital, but we, of course, are using those this year. So that needs to go back over there. So at the end of the day, it's a net change of the operating budget, an increase of $10.2 million from projected actual, but only $1 million increase from this year's budget. So budget to budget, we've only got $1 million. So budget to budget, we've only got $1 million of new revenue. Now, if we throw that state tax commission money back in there, that gives us some additional resources. So right now, we are, that's the plan. Those are the major assumptions on the biggest pieces of spending. And I'll stay off of Joe's slide there. Questions? I forgot to put a question slide in.
Are there any questions here from my colleagues? Mr. Hogan?
Thanks, Ms. Quinley. I'm trying to wrap my head around, like, I know you're making calls to the state tax commission and all of that. And I know it sounds like they've got hearings. Are they scheduled for June? So they're already on the books?
They are on the books. They have official scheduled dates and times. I did speak with their representative. She expects they'll keep the schedule at this point. It did get pushed back because they all got pushed back due to COVID. But they do expect to have those hearings in June.
Okay. And do you, is it your anticipation that those hearings will? I mean, how long do they take? Will they be wrapped up in June or could it slide to July, August?
Could slide, yeah. Because they are pretty, they're pretty good about asking for firm data and, you know, they, they work off of data. Ideally, that has come to them by the time of the hearing. But if they have to push back for something, it could slide back.
And then after, do you anticipate that the, that decisions will come from this round of hearings? Or could it slide another year or?
The conversation that I had, it was anticipated they would come from this round of hearings. They are doing a pretty good job, is what I was told, of getting them wrapped up this year. There's a lot of them in the state, not just Jackson County.
Sure.
But they're trying to close them as they get to them by being prepared when they show up for the hearing.
Okay. And then how long after a hearing would we know what the outcome is and then expect the funds to be released?
So the hearings are, I think they're mostly scheduled between like June 4th and June 15th, which means that that information on the hearings gets back to the county collector here, who holds those funds, the treasurer who holds those funds. And if, if they release them to the, to Jackson County authorize that release in June, then we would likely get those monies in July from the county. If they push back to July, I would say it could be August.
Okay. And then one, sorry, one final question. I know I've asked way too many. I was just trying to get an understanding of like what the process is. Let's, let's assume worst-case scenario, the hearings, we don't get the outcome that we desire in June, July, or August. What's our next course of action to sort of force resolution, if you will?
We might get into Bill's territory here, Mr. Thornton's territory. I don't believe we have influence or impact on the state tax commission really in any manner other than the, the, these taxes have been paid and they're sitting at the county. So it's not that we have to wait for someone to pay afterwards. But if, are you asking if the hearings don't happen or if the results of the hearings seem to be incorrect?
Let's say that there's no outcome, meaning they get, they slide into next year for some reason or right, they just get punted down the road. I guess I'm just trying to understand, like, how do we go, start to plan for a worst-case scenario? And is it really that this commission just sort of has all authority and there's nothing? We just are sort of sitting at the will of the commission? And maybe that, I don't know if that's a Mr. Thornton question or not, but?
He's, he's ready.
Case law and statutes say that when it comes to making an appeal about assessments, meaning we would be concerned about an under-assessment, like not getting enough money, that case law is strong and says that we don't have standing. So, and Linda and I have talked to the attorneys. I had, put in our conversation with the attorney at the S T C. And if the money's there, and like Linda said too, they're backed up because they have so many. If that, as long as that money, they pay for that money. So the money sits with the collector in Jackson County. As long as they continue to do that process, there's not really much we can do as far as trying to fight it. And I think that's what you're talking about, right? If it keeps drifting, you know, what can we do? Probably the best thing we can do is just keep asking the questions you're asking, right? And that is, you know, when is a reasonable date that we'll be able to find out what's going on? But as far as being able to have standing or go to court and try to fight those things, the law didn't support us in trying to do that.
Awesome.
Mr. Barca and then Mr. Wasserstrom.
Yeah, I, I want to continue briefly after the 19,000 questions Nate asked.
It's Mr. Hogan.
Fair enough. So the reality there, first, I guess, let me acknowledge that from our last discussion on the state tax commission, the county executive reached out to us and said that he was willing to be helpful any way he can. So I, I want to acknowledge that as something that he extended. Now, that reality creates another opportunity, right? Is there any opportunity for then the tax collector, or his collector, to create standing for us in way of collecting that tax? Because I think if that's an opportunity to extend our ability to collect that, maybe there's an opportunity there. And Mr. Thornton, I don't, that's, I don't know if that's necessarily your question as much as just food for thought as we look to our partners to try and collect these taxes to support our kids. The other thing that I wanted to ask, which I think is more projection here, the reality is, and you mentioned this, that we have, we don't have a bond levy to support our budget.
Right.
In other budgets, in Dr. Bedell or Ms. Quinley, what percentage of the budget would a bond levy like this add value to our, our budget?
If we had gone the traditional route of a general obligation bond for the debt we have on the books today, that $8 million of annual principal and interest would be paid by that debt service levy and there would be $8 million back into the operating budget annually.
So that's basically a tool that we're not necessarily utilizing as a community and unfortunately, putting us in a, in a difficult position. So I just want to again, make reference to that for the community who's listening so that if that comes up as an opportunity, that we should definitely consider it.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
We have a reassessment year coming up. I understand that Jackson County, everybody in the state has reassessment every other year. So we've spent a long time crying over the history of what happened the last assessment. But we have an opportunity to do the reassessment correctly. The biggest criticism that I've heard of the job that Gail Beatty did in the last reassessment is that Jackson County did not send out enough people into the field to personally inspect properties that had major hikes. Has the school district worked with Gail Beatty to make sure that Jackson County is going to get enough people out in the field so that the Country Club Plaza and the other commercial properties will pay a fair amount of taxes like everybody else pays?
That's a great question. I have had the opportunity to have a couple of really good conversations with our assessor, Ms. McCann Beatty. And they have definitely, they requested from the county leadership and received from the county leadership additional resources to really up their game. They've contracted with Tyler Technologies, which happens to be the student, they have a relationship to our student technology system for both technology, cameras, and people to come in and do some additional work. I actually have a meeting, Dr. Bedell and I do, this coming week with them again and we'll be able to give you a report of where they are.
Great.
I have a question. I'm looking to see if my colleagues, okay. So on the $2.9 million assessment collection fee that we provide, that only occurs every other year, correct?
No, every year.
It's on an annual basis? And then we, but that is the fee that we pay and in support of the county's operations.
Correct.
Are the charter schools and the other taxing jurisdictions also paying a commensurate fee?
Every taxing jurisdiction pays that fee. Technically, charter schools do not right now because we've had this conversation many times. Property taxes, while they are delayed to our charter counterparts, assume 100% of the assessed valuation is collected. And so technically, they are not currently sharing in that fee. That's the burden of the school district.
Okay, so we are paying that fee on behalf of the charter schools in the city as well as ourselves. But our other taxing jurisdictions are making a payment. And is that, so the assignment of the fee just solely to us and not shared? Is that something that is in statute or how, how does that play out?
It is based on DESI's interpretation of the statute when charters came to be and how we share our funding. It says, "Charter shall receive a proportionate share of property taxes." And the way DESI decided or determined that that calculation should be made is they take that assess, that final assessed valuation figure, whatever it will be, it'll be 3.8 or 9 billion dollars. They assume 100% of that is collected and they say, "Here's the amount per pupil for charter schools." And so, that is DESI's interpretation of the statute.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions on this? Thank you. Dr. Bedell, back to you.
All right, Madam Chair. We are ready now to have Joe to come up and present the technologies for 2122.
Good evening. Two things that are not going to be on the slides for this evening are two projects that were funded in this fiscal year, but we're going to be implementing next year, which the first one is our 9 through 12 grade interactive flat panel one screens that are going into all of our high schools. So that purchase is happening this month and then we'll be rolling those out over the summer. The other purchase that has already happened that the board has approved is our new student information system. So we're standing that up behind the scenes right now. We've already done online enrollment with it and we'll be implementing that for summer school and then rolling that forward. As we look at the slide for next fiscal year, we'll see some student USB and iPad headphones. So what we learned this year throughout testing is we need headphones for our students and that can be at home. It could also be in the classroom as we do testing for that as well as other interactive learning for our students. Mobile hotspots, while we are increasing, we've already paid out that contract for the next fiscal year. So there's no additional cost for that going forward. Webcams, these are going to be going in our classrooms, coming out of S R 2 funding. We're going to be renewing Google Voice this coming August. So depending on what status we're in or what phase we're in for COVID and all of that, we want to make sure that we continue Google Voice so that we're prepared if we have to go back out into some other type of learning. The Unified HVAC Project Controller. What we learned this year is we have some very separate HVAC controls throughout the district and it was very difficult to do all the HVAC configurations and upgrades without having all that in a unified system. So that project will be funding with S R 2 as well. The K C P S homeroom channel, that is something we already have, is just a renewal. The replacement iPads, $150,000. What we have learned this year is iPads break a lot faster when the students take them home. So we are going to beef up our iPad fleet. We do have really good accidental damage protection on our iPads. But we want to make sure that our loner fleet is beefed up so that we don't have students without devices while we're refreshing those. And then parts for student device repairs. Out of the operating funds for next year, we have additional iPad chargers, Chromebook chargers, implementing our new learning management system. So what we'll be doing over the course of next year is our proof of concept phase of our phase implementation for our new learning management system. So our learning management system is replacing Google Classroom and it's very exciting. But we'll be piloting it or proof of concepting it at five schools over the course of next school year so we can take those lessons learned into a full implementation the following school year. But we do have some startup costs for that. Student devices, replacement there, you'll see a million dollars. That's actually two years' worth of funding for those devices. The way that device cycles are working now, it's not possible to order now and get those replacements in by the end of the fiscal year. So we're funding two years right now. And then we're going to go ahead and order those much earlier. What's going on with those devices, if you're not aware, China, Taiwan, Vietnam, a lot of them have retooled their glass factories to make Plexiglas for COVID. So it's really delayed that process. Next is some project Lead the Way student devices for beefing up those labs there. A staff device refresh and then a staff monitor replacement refresh. That'll go along with those new staff devices. Under capital funds, we have the district fiber loop that we're planning to build throughout all of our buildings. So that will be a fiber connection running throughout our entire district. And it is planned to be E-rate reimbursable. And that project is planned to be completed by the end of 2024. Right now, we're looking at what the FCC is doing with E-rate and we're going to be monitoring that very closely. So before we bring all these proposals to you, we'll make sure that the funding's there, the board's approved the budget and that the spend has been approved. So with that, are there any questions?
I'll open it up for questions. Mr. Wasserstrom?
Before this school year started, you made a report to the board, as I recall, that 30% of the computers were missing, had not been returned by students. I did a request for documents and the administration gave me $150 worth of pieces of paper that supposedly represented all the studies that have been done. But I didn't see any comprehensive report explaining what happened to the 30%. Are you working, still working on some report about what happened to the computers that weren't returned last year?
Yeah, so that's a complicated issue for sure. What we're looking at with the 30% is actually the number we were able to collect from last year. We had a much lower rate than 30% after it was all said and done. We had a very large and significant district-wide initiative to reach out to our families. We had principals and teachers going to homes to get the devices so that we could refresh them and get them back out to students. So our actual non-return rate before school started last year, or this year, sorry, was about 15%. And the way that we're monitoring that is not necessarily with a comprehensive dig. We have a new inventory system and we stood that up right before COVID hit. It's called Incident IQ and it's our IT ticketing and inventory system. So we have all of our students linked to all their devices and now we're able to see exactly what's happening with those devices. What we had prior to that was a lot of gray area and not quite knowing what was happening with all the devices. We would, they would get assigned to a student inside of the S I S system. But then if, you know, any teacher or anybody who had access to that field in Tyler could change what device that student had or not change it, right? So we found out that that was an issue and that's why we implemented the inventory system right before COVID. What we also have is geo-tracking on those devices. And so, we've been working on getting those and collecting those back. That is normally a pretty lengthy process to actually get those back. So what we're doing is usually a year, 18 months in arrears is when we can really find our actual lost value for each device that is lost. So I can create a report for you on that, but right now, it's just living in our inventory system. So if you'd like an export, we can get that to Ms. Kochmeyer to get to you.
I know Ms. Wolfsee requested a question and then Mr. Barca.
I was interested, if you wouldn't mind talking a little bit about the fiber loop and what the benefits of having our own fiber loop will bring. I think that that's a very exciting thing.
Sure, absolutely. So with our own fiber loop, it's important to understand how the internet works for our district. So right now, we have internet through our internet service provider under MooreNet, which is under the University of Missouri. And it's about a 10 gigabyte or gigabit pipe to some of our buildings. We have about one gig to each of our high schools and middle schools and then 500 megs to each of our elementary schools. So what a fiber loop does is a couple of things for us. One, we don't have something that's called redundancy. So each internet connection to each of our buildings is just one connection. If something happens, construction happens, a tower gets taken out or something like that, we lose internet at that building and potentially several other buildings. So the first thing that fiber does is allow us to have that redundancy and that protection in place in case something happens. But there's some other really great things that we can do with fiber that we're seeing in some other cities with council great city school partners, like down in Dallas. They're using their fiber backbone to have private LTE internet throughout their district. So if you look at a district like ours, we have a lot of digital red zoning, for lack of a better term, that's going on with a lot of our internet service providers. So they just simply don't build out the infrastructure in certain areas of our district. So we can give hotspots to our students, but there's no cell towers. We can try to give them the programs to sign up for, you know, reduced internet, internet rates, but the providers aren't at the homes. So what we're looking at is a few things. We're working with the city of Kansas City. Rick Usher and his team over there were investigating the emergency broadband benefit that should be coming out as part of the American Rescue Plan and seeing what ways we can leverage that. But building out potentially our own private LTE like they're doing in Dallas is something that our own fiber loop would allow us to do as well. And what that is, is we basically would have our own cell towers on trailers that we can put in locations that we deem that they need to be. And then we give little boxes to our families. And those boxes are really important because those families can take those boxes to their other places if they have to move other places. That box will convert the cell signal into Wi-Fi internet for the whole house. So that's just one of the projects that a fiber loop could potentially give to us. Additionally, we own our own internet when we have our own fiber loop. So if our ISP goes down, if they get hacked or something like that, we have some more secure redundancy that way as well. Sure, absolutely.
Mr. Barca?
Yeah, I'm glad my colleague asked that question. I think that, that was a very exciting opportunity.
I think that that was a very exciting opportunity and I think we've had conversations about something like this before, so this is very innovative and exciting. I also just want to acknowledge in two slides, you have covered so much information. So thank you for all that you do. You, your team is incredible and just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you.
Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Joe, a couple of things. One, thank you for making that understandable even for Mr. Barca. That was impressive. No, but seriously, a couple of questions. So on the $1.3 million under operating funds for the staff device refresh, didn't we just do that? Okay, so this is, this is more, I guess, for maybe Ms. Cortez and Ms. Wolfsee as you're working with Ms. Quinley and others as we talk about how to help the board sort of understand some of these things. Like it'd be good to know, oh, you've already done that. Right, like what's the process? You know, we go to an MOU first, it then turns into a request for the funding from the board. Here's where we're spending it. To be able to sort of track that in a really easily identifiable way would be super useful because I see it and I go, well shit, I mean, well darn, excuse me. Hey, we're all adults here. You know, it's like while we just spent this $1.3 million, I remember that. So that's more feedback for us internally. Apologies to the community. On the, the fiber loop one, I'm curious how you'll implement that with Blueprint 2030 in mind, right? Thinking about, we don't want to go across every single school with this, right? Until we have an understanding of what schools will still be, you know, sort of thriving post Blueprint 2030, right? So do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm glad you brought that up. So the fiber loop is part of the digital transformation plan that Dr. Bedell has us working on and that ties directly into Blueprint 2030. So as we do the work next year for a district fiber loop, the, the kind of expenditures that we'll be seeing is front-loading of potential equipment, fees for design and that type of stuff. We should not, and I agree, start a build until we have a better idea of what the next few years would look like. So, and it's possible, it, I don't know, it's possible things change, of course, but we do want to make sure that we're very tightly aligned with Blueprint 2030 and what the district is going to look like in the future while also future-proofing all of our infrastructure. So yeah, absolutely.
Cool, thanks.
Ms. Cortez?
So the budget nerd in me, thinking budget is policy, would also like to kind of pose the question, not expecting you to answer it tonight, but kind of as we think forward, with the significant investments that we've made in student, staff, and classroom technology and lots of other components. As we think about not just fiscal year '22, but a year, two years, three years out, what are the kind of rhythms that we need to be keeping in mind from a technology refresh and planning standpoint?
Absolutely, great question, Ms. Cortez. So when we look at our technology, especially staff, student devices, the real thing that we have to focus on is battery life. So when we purchase our student and staff portable devices, our laptops, we get what are called 3,000 cycle batteries. And that means you can power it now and power it back up about 3,000 times or three years. So what we look at is a three-year cycle in with a four-year cycle out. But we also are doing something very important and that is when we take those devices out of cycle, we're hanging on to them for a year until we get a new cycle. That does a couple of things for us. One, when we have to do things like standardized testings and we need to do carts that we deliver out to the schools, we have those devices available. If we get low, we get a surge in student population or a large number of devices just get damaged, we have that loner fleet available. So on those devices, it's going to be three years in and the fourth year refresh is what we can expect on those staff and student devices. Other things like our network infrastructure, our servers, that type of stuff, we're looking at a five-year in with a six-year replace on those cycles. And we have all of that as part of our five-year technology plan that we did, I think, two years ago and I can make sure that we get those to the board as well.
Ms. Cortez, to your question, I think something that is important for us to make sure we note here is that last year or this year, this time of the year, I get confused about which fiscal year I'm working in. This year and next year in this budget, we are doing as much as we can to maximize access to those SRT dollars and the CARES Act dollars that were around technology. And so we are putting some things in those that would normally be in our operating budget. So in about three years, when all of those monies go away, our budget's probably going to have a little bit of a shock because that annual line that is necessary to meet replacement when you're a one-to-one environment and you have all of these things, has to be there every year in the operating budget, right? It doesn't come and go like it's coming and going right now, a little bit to your question.
Right. So I think, you know, once we make the investment, we have to see it as a long-term, and I actually think that, I remember your presentation a couple of years ago when I first came on the board with that multi-year projection. I think having the board see that at least once a year to understand kind of what our horizon really looks like is really helpful because it's just not something that's top of mind all the time, but it's, it, it is a permanent investment.
Yeah, sure, absolutely. And one other thing we did this year is we made adjustments to that cycle. So if we were leveraging needs for COVID response, we shifted cycles so that we could stay on a cycle. And that was a very important thing that we wanted to do because although we were responding to COVID, we were also digitally transforming our district and going one-to-one take-home almost overnight. And we wanted to make sure the decisions we were making and the purchases we were making were sustainable into the future, so.
So one of my questions is, and maybe it was said, Mr. Phillips, but it, the SRT2 monies, we have not, those have not yet been received, correct? And those are paid, those are reimbursements made once we've made the expenditure, correct?
I believe that's correct, but I'll refer to Ms. Quinley.
Okay, so we will have to upfront that money and then we'll, and what is that, is that a timely reimbursement process or is it kind of like property tax revenues that get held?
That's a great question. Much faster than that.
Okay, good.
So when, when the feds distribute those dollars, they actually send them. So Desi's been holding SRT1 for months. And if we submit, we try to submit every few weeks based on what we've spent in the last few weeks, so we submit as often as twice a month and then we'll get them, we'll get that payment on the next cycle, which is 20th of each month.
So SRT2, we're still in SRT1.
Right.
So we're still, we're still able to leverage those funds.
Correct.
SRT2 starts at what point?
SRT2 is eligible for anything from this past year forward, but you have to finish SRT1 before you can tap into SRT2. So we're working really hard to get SRT1 fully billed out before June 30th of this year and we're pretty much there. We only have me, we have certainly less than a million dollars, I believe, to draw down on SRT1. So we'll be closed out on it as quickly as we can be because we want to get access to these SRT2 dollars right away.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Yeah, Madam Chair, before we move on to the business items, I did want to publicly congratulate Joe recently earning his doctorate degree. And I know that while we have been going through this pandemic, we've had a couple of other staff members that we normally would publicly, publicly acknowledge, I do want to do the same for Lloyd Jackson. I believe you earned yours throughout this pandemic too. And I know Kristy isn't here, but I believe she, did she earn hers during the pandemic or was it a year before? Oh, okay, great. So I just wanted to make sure I acknowledged that and, you know, continuous learning here is, is critical and thank you all. All right? All right, so we will move on and.
So next items on the agenda are the regular business items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A number of these business items are amendments and this is pretty common for us throughout the year as we are working with a number of our providers. The first one is Sherwood Autism Center. It's our first amendment for a $400,000 increase. And we are requesting that the board take action on this increase this year with Sherwood based on our student enrollment within the program. The 400,000 result, increase results in a total contract of 1.3 million and these funds are available in the special education operating budget.
Are there any questions on the Sherwood Autism Center First Amendment? Hearing no questions, it would be in order to receive a motion to approve the Sherwood Autism Center First Amendment.
Some of them.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote. The secretary will call the roll, please.
Ms. Manczer?
Yes.
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes. The next item on the agenda, Dr. Bedell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is cornerstones of care. This is our third amendment for a $400,000 increase. We are asking the same in terms of approval of this amendment based on student enrollment within the program. This increase will result in a total contract of 1.1 million and as usual, these funds are available in the special education operating budget.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding cornerstones of care, Third Amendment? Hearing none, it would be in order to receive a motion to approve.
Some of them. Second?
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote. The secretary will please call the roll.
Ms. Manczer?
Yes.
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
The motion passes, thank you. Dr. Bedell, the next item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is the Rainbow Center, First Amendment for $200,000. The administration is requesting approval of this amendment to increase the contract for this year with the Rainbow Center for communicative, I cannot pronounce that word, communicative. This order is based on student enrollment in the program. This $200,000 increase will result in a total contract of $505,760 and these funds are available in the special, special education operating budget.
Are there any questions about this business item? If there are none, it would be in order to receive a motion to approve the First Amendment for Rainbow Center for communicative disorders.
Some of them. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing none, secretary will please call the roll.
Ms. Manczer?
Yes.
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Dr. Bedell, the next item?
All right, the next item is A-List LLC amendment for $200,000. The administration is requesting approval of this amendment to provide additional temporary supports for the technology service help desk and in buildings as we continue to rev up our return to school efforts. The $200,000 increase is available in the technology services operating budget and this is to not exceed a total of $449,000.
Are there any questions on this item? I did have a question I wanted to ask. So it looks like this is a sort of a short-term project or request that will be concluded by the end of the calendar year because this is maybe supporting the implementation of the new SIS system, is that right?
So that is a part of the contract. We have a contract integrator, or integration specialist that's helping us move all the files from Tyler SIS over to Infinite Campus SIS. So that should be done by the end of the calendar year. The rest of the contract will actually be expiring June 30th and we'll be putting out a bid for a new contract for technology services support. So one of the things that we have learned as we have gone one-to-one very rapidly is the increase of support that's needed. But we also want to find out exactly what that formula is. So that's why you've, you've seen a couple of amendments to this contract as we've had different ways that we've been doing education. We've had walk-ins here at BOE, we've had building support, teacher support and all of that. So this will be the last amendment for this fiscal year and then we plan to put out a two-year contract for next FY.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on this item? Hearing none, it would be in order to receive a motion to approve the A-List LLC Fourth Amendment in the amount of $200,000.
Some of them.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote. The secretary will please call the roll.
Ms. Manczer?
Yes.
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
The motion is approved. The next item on the list, Dr. Bedell, the Wilson Group.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The administration is requesting that the board take action on the Wilson Group contract for $927,200. This contract is, the purpose of this contract is to replace roughly 50% of our existing drinking fountains and with water bottle filling stations. This is something we have shared with you all at the start of the pandemic, but did not have the resources to, to be able to do this. And now that we have the SRT2 funds, we are at this point able to move forward with starting to make those changes in our schools with the, with the water bottle filling stations.
All right, are there any other questions on this item? Hearing none, oh, hearing none, it would be in order to receive a motion to approve the recommendation, the superintendent to approve the contract for the Wilson Group in the amount of $927,200.
Some of them.
Second?
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing none, the secretary will please call the roll.
Ms. Manczer?
Yes.
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Thank you, the Wilson Group contract is approved. Seeing no other regular business items, I'll now turn to the consent agenda. It would be in order to receive a motion to approve the consent agenda, items one through 25.
Some of them.
Second.